Call to order the meeting of Monday, August the 8th. And if the clerk would please take the roll.
Councilmember Archibald.
Here.
Councilmember Fisher.
Here.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Councilmember Mohler.
Here.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Here.
Mayor Rep.
Here. Give the minutes before you from the regular meeting of July 11th and the special meeting of July 18th. Do we have a motion to receive and file?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Archibald. Is there a second?
Support.
Thank you, Councilmember Fisher. Is there any additions or deletions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes will be as submitted. We do have one correction to the agenda, which the clerk will read.
It is to Resolution Number 13, and the expiration date for Jeff Wine is to be expiring on August 11th, 2013, instead of 2014, as listed on the agenda.
Thank you. We may move on to presentations. Presentation Number One.
Stephen Metzer will give a presentation regarding the Americans with Disabilities Act requirements and plan.
Well, thank you. I'm here to just give a short presentation on the requirements of the Americans with Disabilities Act, as it outlines the requirements for a self-evaluation and transition plan, which DLZ has provided through the Public Services Department on behalf of the City of Port Huron. It's under consideration on the consent agenda for adoption and formal grievance procedure as outlined within the submitted report. First, a little bit about the Americans with Disabilities Act. The Americans with Disabilities Act was adopted in 1990. It's been around for over 20 years now, and is essentially legislation which requires and mandates that disabled persons be provided the same accessible opportunities to services and not subject to discrimination. It's broken out into five different parts or titles. The self-evaluation that DLZ performed on behalf of the city focused primarily on Title Two, which is access to public services, similar to those that are provided within this building, fire services and whatnot. The federal government, and more specifically, the Access Board, which is a branch of the federal government, outlines policies and procedures and develops all the different guidelines that we use to measure architectural components, numbers of parking spaces, all the types of things that you may be very familiar with. But there's also a lot of other things that they continually are coming out with. Most recently, in the fall of 2010, they adopted new regulations relevant to public marinas, river walks, and they're continuing to come up with new ones. So this is an ongoing procedure. Our key requirement of the self-evaluation is that all public entities, and that includes cities, townships, villages, counties, state governments, federal government agencies, school districts and whatnot, are required to perform a self-evaluation of the accessibility of their programs and facilities. And entities that are greater than 50 employees also have additional requirements for record-keeping and keeping their records available for public review. Next slide, please. Thank you. The evaluation that we performed focused really on accessibility, and it did not necessarily look strictly at the architectural accessibility, but also the accessibility as it relates to how the services are provided. We did, in fact, look at all of the architectural barriers that may exist within different city facilities or parks, but we also looked at how those services are provided, our accommodations made if, for instance, the service window here in City Hall is not low enough for someone in a wheelchair to be served equally, as someone that was not in a wheelchair. Are the policies of that department allowing for similar type of, or same type of accessible accessibility to those services, meeting them at another table, bringing a laptop around and being able to work with that resident? The ADA does not require modifications to buildings if they are preventing, are presenting a barrier, as long as you can provide accessibility in other ways. And that was one of the main focuses of our report. While we did provide the architectural barriers and cost estimates for improving those, in addition to, at the polling places that we worked on very closely with the city clerk over a year ago, before the 2010 primary elections, there are other ways that we can provide accessibility, and we did try to focus on some of those as well. Just a short introduction to some of the things that we did do as part of the evaluation, starting on the outside of the facilities. All of the city-owned buildings, community centers, parks, we looked at parking lots, the number of parking spaces, signage, making sure that there were an adequate number of properly marked and signed parking spaces, the dimensions, making sure that they're wide enough for either van-accessible or barrier-free accessibility. Then, from the parking lot, we ensured that there was an accessible route. Doesn't do any good to get one, someone into a parking lot, but they can't get to the building. So we looked at marking for the accessible route, as well as whether that route was truly accessible. The city has, through the Public Services Department, surveyed all of the curb ramps. One of the more common things that you may see around town, not just within the city right-of-way, but also MDOT's right-of-way, with many of the detectable warning plates that are there for people with visual disabilities to know that they are leaving a sidewalk and getting ready to enter a crosswalk in front of potential vehicular traffic. And that's one of the more visible types of ADA compliance and accessibility items that are out in the city currently. The next slide, we did also, as I mentioned, look at all the buildings indoors. We looked at things such as, is the door into the facility accessible? Is the doorway wide enough? Is it, the pull strength on that door such that if someone was in a wheelchair, for example, they could pull it open, get in there without it slamming on their, on them and allow them to get in? We also looked at hardware, things such as whether it was a knob that you have to grasp and turn, which is not an accessible type of hardware. Those are very easy to replace, but those are certainly things that we did look at. And we did only look at the publicly accessible portions of public buildings. We did not go into the employees' area, but we did discuss that in the plan. In addition to the entrances, we looked at things such as the restrooms, public restrooms, drinking fountains, making sure that there were no barriers or items sticking out from the wall, that someone with a cane, that would be perhaps with a visual disability, following along a wall, something sticking out from the wall like a clock or something like that does present a hazard, and those items were noted. We also looked at the slope of floors, ramps such as this, which are intended to provide accessibility to people with physical disabilities, but the requirements of these ramps are generally a little bit tighter than what you see in buildings that are this age. And again, there are other ways that we can provide that accessibility. Next slide, please. In addition to looking at that, as I mentioned, we did look at city program services and activities, things such as the Parks and Recreation Program. The Parks and Recreation Department puts on a number of programs that are available all year round to city residents, and we look to ensure that they provided equal opportunities. And in the event that someone with a disability wanted to enroll, that they would find a way to accommodate them, and I think that's going to be an ongoing area. Parks and Recreation professionals generally do get special training for accessibility with, for people with special needs, and we found that to be fairly consistent through our evaluation. I mentioned that we did look at all the polling places, and that led directly to some changes in the locations, as well as grants and improvements to some of the polling places. Many of them are not owned by the city, they're schools and churches, and that, I think, went a long ways, as the clerk will hopefully attest to, to improving accessibility to all elections for persons with all various types of disabilities. Public meeting locations, advertisement for public meetings, which is always a difficult thing, as we heard at many of our meetings from representatives of the public that attended from the Blue Water Center for Independent Living and Team Access. And then a key component was developing a formal grievance procedure, so that if someone does have a complaint relative to an accessibility, accessibility to a program or a procedure, that they have a formal process, so they know how they're going to file it, who they're going to file it to, and then how it's going to be handled and reported back to them as required under the Americans with Disabilities Act. The document that's up for consideration on the consent agenda is really broken out into two parts. It includes a self-evaluation, which is the result of our evaluation of all the city buildings, procedure, our parks, procedures and whatnot, as well as a curb, the curb ramp policy that is out there for all the public right-of-way curb ramps and recommendations, as well as the transition plan, which spells out how those approximately $1.5 million in required improvements should be phased in based on the barriers that they present over a 20-year period, as funds allow. The Americans with Disabilities Act, much like many other mandates, are unfunded from the federal government, and unfortunately, there are very little on providing grants for that type of work, but they are getting better. So we're hoping that that's going to help to provide some of that, so that's not a direct out-of-pocket cost to the city residents. And then, as I mentioned earlier, we do have the grievance procedure formalized within the document itself. So what follows the adoption tonight, if you approve the adoption of the plan tonight? Well, first and foremost, it is regular reviews and updates. As I mentioned, there was a recent update of the Americans with Disabilities Act accessibility guidelines in September. They are currently hearing public comments on the public right-of-way, which is going to be ongoing for, I believe, the next 60 or 90 days or so, and they have pledged to continue to make improvements and add new regulations as those types of topics are brought to them by the disabled community. In addition to regular updates, record-keeping is going to be very vital. Any complaints and how those were resolved and handled needs to be filed and maintained with the ADA Coordinator. I believe that's going to be going through the BPIC with the formal grievance procedure. In addition, there's some recommended training and documentation of the training of various city departments and city staff that is ongoing. Department of Public Services, Mr. Clegg and Dave Smith and Sarah Montoya have gone through a lot of the training, were very, very helpful throughout this whole project and process, and I think will be key components of ensuring that that continues to go on and protect the city from lawsuits filed by the Bureau, by the Department of Justice, U.S. Department of Justice, because the ADA does include pretty stiff penalties for noncompliance. And then finally, implementation of the accessibility improvements as the budget allows. So with that, I'm available to answer any questions. I will stay for the consent agenda discussion, if there are any questions at that time.
Is there anyone on council who has any questions or comments? No? Thank you for your report. Public hearing Number One.
Is to hear comments on Code Case Number 11-016, located at 801 Tenth Street, to determine whether it constitutes a nuisance as defined by Chapter 10, Section 10-211, and Chapter 34, Section 34-3 of the Port Huron City Code. Following the public hearing, council will consider approving the immediate demolition of the structure for listed violations.
Now is the time, under public hearing, to address the city council relative to public hearing Number One on 801 Tenth Street. If you'd like to come forward and give your name, please.
Good evening. Jesse Araj. I'm representing the property owner. There's no objections at this time.
Yeah, councilmembers, thank you. Yes, that's just exactly what I was going to add. We have had discussion and reviewed the material. They are giving no objection to your course of action to declare the public nuisance.
Okay. What was your name again? I'm sorry.
Jesse Araj. A-R-A-J.
Does anyone have any questions on council or comments from Ms. Harmer? I might ask, does this mean that they are not going to complete the repairs, or that they don't object if they don't get it done in time?
It means that they agree that it is going to go forward if you desire as a public nuisance, and will go through the bid process for demolition grounds.
Okay. I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, we have a resolution to approve demolition. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Fisher. Is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Lewandowski, is there discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Fisher.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Councilmember Mohler.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes.
The next portion on our agenda is public comment. As the chair, I'm going to take the liberty, I would like to make a couple of comments, because I'm sure there's a lot of people in the audience tonight that wish to talk about Blue Water Fest. And there has been a lot of misinformation as far as dollars spent by the city and that type of thing, so rather than perpetuate that during the audience, I'd like to at least make a comment. Public, Blue Water Fest has been known for the past, as it's been known for the past two years, was initiated through our city manager, Bruce Brown, and the endorsement of a majority of city council. The feeling was that the tourism portion of our economy would be enhanced by the development of a premier event that would showcase our city and provide an economic boost to our downtown merchants and restaurants. At the suggestion of Pure Michigan, a professional promoter was retained. It seems that perhaps the ultimate goal has not been achieved. It has been stated that the city spent $400,000 for this event, and that is not true. The Blue Water Fest has been financed primarily through sponsorships by local and state businesses and through revenues from the various activities. The City of Port Huron did provide $25,000, and the Downtown Development Authority provided $30,000 as seed money. Certainly, the expectation was that the fest would break even or make a profit. Once the final figures are available, which would be after all expenses have been paid, we will know the final outcome, and that will be publicly presented. As a matter of fact, the committee met today to go over and discuss concerns and any possible changes that should, in a future event, be held that could happen. After several problems, the first-year committee of over 25 volunteers and stakeholders worked together to tackle those problems and to make the Blue Water Fest better. One of the main issues this year seems to have been the fencing and the $1 donation. As far as the $1, the committee had good intentions when they decided that a donation of food or $1 could help the less fortunate families in our community. Unfortunately, I believe many people viewed this as an admission fee, and some of the gates were poorly handled. In spite of the miscommunication at the gates, we did receive over 8,000 cans of food and enough cash to feed over 2,000 needy families. As far as fencing the area, it is a requirement of the Michigan Liquor Control Commission that if alcohol is sold for consumption on-site, that the area must be clearly cordoned off. I believe that the Blue Water Fest Committee did a lot of things right, and most of the previous year's problems were addressed. To focus on a few negatives is counterproductive. I have received negative comments from a few people, but many positive comments as well, as to the good entertainment in a secure setting. Any comments received this evening, both negative and positive, will be heard by the city council and certainly will be taken into consideration before any future event where to receive any city money. I would just ask that the issues be brought forth and that criticisms be based on facts and not on personal attacks. On another note, if you didn't get a chance to view the International Offshore Powerboat Race this weekend, you missed an exciting time. For a first-time event, it was well-attended and no city dollars were used. All expenses were covered by revenues and sponsorships. For both events of the Water Fest and the International Offshore Powerboat Race, the support from local sponsors and volunteers was phenomenal, and I would like to personally thank all of those involved. If we are going to continue to host events in Port Huron, we need to work together and come up with workable solutions. And public audience is now open. Anybody who'd like to speak, they can come to the podium, and you have four minutes, if you give your name.
Good evening. I don't know how many times I do this, but I still get nervous when I come up here, and I apologize. Good evening, councilmembers. Mayor Rep. My name is Darlene Peterson. I reside at 3017 Riverside Drive. Thank you, as always, for doing a thankless job at times. My only comment, and this actually was said prior to this, and I appreciate your comments, Mayor Rep, on this issue, my only comment to the recently passed fest is, I still have faith in you as a council and belief in your commitment to the betterment of Port Huron as it affects our Blue Water area. I've felt this all along, and I truly believe that in the future and in the past, you've had our best interests at heart. We are one community, and I continue to hope others see this in the future. Yes, I do believe this council listens to us, the citizens. A positive example would be the recent hire of a new police chief, Reeves, for our city's safety. The Blue Water area extends far beyond the city borderline, as hazy as it can be at several areas. What is important for all to realize is, folks that come to our Blue Water area have a good time, whether it is for sailboats, snowmobile races, speedboats, classic cars, or any event. The Rock in the Riverfront's a very good example. There were tons of people down there. It was awesome. City Rock, kudos to them. When they cross the invisible line between any township and the city common, they do not realize they are leaving the city and entering township, I'm sorry, entering Port Huron Township, Fort Gratiot Township, Campbell Township, Clyde Township, or Versa Township. When they leave our Blue Water area, if asked, "What did you do this weekend?", they would more than likely say, "I went to Port Huron and had a great time." They would not specifically state, "I went to Fort Gratiot and had fun," or, "I went to Port Huron Township, fished at the pond." So the success in Port Huron Township and Fort Gratiot Township is a bonus to the City of Port Huron. It pays off in big time. But on to this next part. Now, on a few issues. I'm not always in agreement on a free pass tax, and when many folks see personal and tax in the same line, they tend to equate it with, "to a person, not things." What one of our longtime employers are requesting is not unreasonable, in my opinion. This is surprising for me. So if they upgrade the equipment to stay in business, to keep people employed, it's a good thing for the area, for our entire area. The paper mill in question, Domtar, is one of two companies extending our future, steady employment for many, with our past, big-time logging using rivers. Some don't realize, personal property tax is a tax on equipment we buy and have already paid substantial sales tax on. Another thing that was brought up earlier in the day by, not this council, but anyway, I will just say, on the city income tax, yes, perhaps it is time to reduce it or do away with it. I pay it myself. I know what a pain it is. A break for all working and residing within the city boundary. On the ADA, whenever a city official mentions doing a study, most become frustrated or angry. I hope that in attempting to make our city accessible to handicapped citizens, it is done using city-paid employees, not an outside firm. When we added our automatic door opener, for instance, I know I'm chump change, I know I'm small, but, you know, when we added our automatic door opener, I didn't need a study to tell me it would be a good, it would be good for our guests. I was not even a, it was not even a mandatory installment. I did it because I knew it would be a nice thing for them.
Darling.
And please, don't send a attachment to my door, because it was considered a service and not an option. Thank you very much for your time.
My name is Barbara Dubay, and I'm a resident of the City of Port Huron. And I'm here today because I love Port Huron. This is my home. I've lived here all my life. Over the years, I've watched the town slide. I've watched crime waves. I've watched unemployment and blight rise, and I've watched the morale of the people I've watched, and I've stayed home and complained. This is the first time that I've come forward to get into the process of doing something about it, because I realize I'm part of the problem when I don't. That being said, I'm here tonight to issue you a reprimand. And when I use the word "reprimand," it is because I want to remind you of who you work for. You work for me. You work for the people of this community. You don't work for out-of-town special interests. Quite frankly, as a citizen, as an entertainer in this town, as someone that's participated, participated in the festival for several years, I'm insulted that you guys believe we can't throw a party. We can't get national acts. We can't get sponsorship. It's a requirement that we have to go to someone out of town to get these things done. That's an insult that we don't deserve. This is a unique and wonderful place, full of very talented people, and we can do this on our own. We don't need Jonathan Witz. The festival, for its whole duration, was a local performance. It showcased us as a community, not us trying to be Ann Arbor, not us trying to be Ferntail, us being Port Huron, because that's good enough for us. We want our festival back. We don't want it run by anyone out of town. We want the party that we make it, and we expect you to make that happen. Thank you.
I'm Susan Marston Dykstra. I am a graduate of the University of Michigan in Political Science, Urban Planning, and Environmental Science, and I'm earning my master's in Politics and Public Administration. When I go to U of M, they ask me, "Where are you from?", and I say, "The Common, Port Huron," and they can tell right away, I'm from Port Huron, because of the way I say it. I haven't been proud of Port Huron lately, and I'm appalled at the way this city is going to shit. And I'm sorry, it's going to hell in a handbasket. I drive through here at night, coming back from U of M, and it is disgusting. You have a high vacancy rate here in downtown. Do any of you drive downtown and see your businesses? There's none there. It's all out in the thing, out on Fort Gratiot. But that's not why I'm here. I'm here to tell you that my mom and dad, Paul Murray, Terry London, and my mom and dad, Joyce and Ted Marston, ran the Blue Water Festival. It was a nonprofit organization. They made $200,000 a year and put it back in every single year. And that's when it was down between the city and the Y. Jim Krueger, or Craig or however you want it, from Coca-Cola Bottling Company, he provided fireworks five days a week. There's none in Port Huron at all this year. It's disgusting the way that this festival has turned out, and I bet you my mother and dad, my dad's still alive, has Alzheimer's, but I know my mother is spinning in her grave. The way they worked for nothing to make people come to the Port Huron, to the Blue Water Festival. That carnival is disgusting. I wouldn't send any kids to that carnival. It's filthy. The people working there are filthy, and they should, I wouldn't send my kids to that carnival at all. And Mayor, if I may be so bold to tell you that the dollar fee and the can was not given to anybody in the City of Port Huron. We're all hungry. We have people here that we know that need food, but it was given to somebody else outside our city.
I don't believe that's true, but I'm not going to get into a debate.
I don't know. I drive through here at night, and the day after Mackinac Night, I couldn't believe it. It looked like an atom bomb hit the City of Port Huron. I went up to Lexington, they had the art fair, and probably had a little bit less, but that day, it was cleaned up, and you could eat off the frickin' sidewalks. It was so clean. It's disgusting. You need to have someone do this that's not in here to make $100,000 a year like Mr. Wirth did. I did see it in the Times Herald, this was $100,000 that he made, or he was given some type of budget. That's disgusting. And if he's even paid any amount of money, he should be doing this for free, as a community That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
I can tell you right now, I am disgusted to say I am a citizen of, that I was a citizen at one time of this city. It's appalling. I'm ashamed that I tell people at U of M that I am from Port Huron. They laugh. Port Huron. They laugh, because it's disgusting.
Hi, my name is Robert Richards. I live on 16th Street in Port Huron. This festival has gotten really bad. Your promoter is just, it's not local anymore, the way you've done it here. I can understand a donation of a dollar, but it was mandatory. I can understand a fence because of the, you know, having liquor. They need to put a sign on there that says "Free Admission." We used to have, what, 100, 200,000 people that have been to the event, and now we're down to 35,000 or 40,000, is what I've read. Something needs to be done. It needs to go back local. Take a look around. This whole area is in bad shape. We got to do something to promote it. That's really all I got to say.
Thank you.
My name is Wing Teal, and I live on Riverside Drive in Port Huron. While I think that tenant spoke for itself this year, I would dare to say that it was the record low in three-quarters of a century, and it only cost the taxpayer $60,000-plus to achieve that record. Last year, a group of citizens, under the name of Blue Water Festival, incorporated a registered entity in the State of Michigan, came before you, and asked you to allow the local people to volunteer and put on the festival. We did not ask for any taxpayer money. We worked diligently on a plan and had several sponsors lined up. We prepared a budget just to be voted down by six of the seven councilmembers. So this year, we just stepped back and watched. Now, it would have been wonderful if Mr. Witz would have taken some of our concerns from last year and made the fest a success. It would have been wonderful to see 100,000 people walk in the streets of Port Huron and to see our local charity. to see our local charities and local vendors make a lot of money. It would have been wonderful if the money spent at the fest, as well as putting on the fest, circulated in St. Clair County instead of leaving this area, but none of that happened. Perhaps the mistake was that Port Huron tried to be like Detroit or Pontiac with this fest. Perhaps instead, we should be looking to emulate towns like Traverse City, Sagatuck, Holland, and Frankhamouth, who win tourists with their friendliness and small-town charm. There's a reason why so many tourists prefer the quaint and unique towns over cities that feel like they're only there to fleece your wallet. While Blue Water Festival, Inc. is still here, and willing to step up to the plate, I would like to ask the city council to allow the citizens of Port Huron to take back what has been our tradition since 1934, when the first international Blue Water Festival was recorded as being held. The first thing that we would do is restore the name, Blue Water Festival. Last year, I met with the city manager, Bruce Brown, and he informed me that he hired the city attorney to research the Blue Water Festival name, and according to him, that name was not registered. What he didn't tell me was that he also hired the city attorney with our tax dollars and paid the filing fees with our tax dollars to try and take the Blue Water Festival name away from the citizens. He has attorney file a service mark application with the US Patent Office, and attempted to register the Blue Water Festival name under the city of Port Huron, so that he could have total control. What the city attorney and Mr. Brown did not know was that the Blue Water Festival, Inc. already had the service mark registered in the state of Michigan, which is all that's required when you don't do activities out of state. The city was turned down their application on January 31st of this year. So please take note that the name Blue Water Festival legally belongs to the citizens of Port Huron, and please take note that "Blue Water Fest" sounds a lot like an infringement on the Blue Water Festival name. Again, I ask the city council to support the local people. What we ask of you to treat is the same way you treated Mr. Witz. You supported him and believed in him. You did not make him jump through hoops, now please do the same for the local citizens. Stop spending our tax dollars on things that are not the city's job. The city's job is to make sure we have things like police and fire departments, trash pickup, and clean water. Yet all these necessities suffered budget cuts or rate increases, and while last year the fest cost taxpayers around $113,000. So I ask you city council to sit aside your pride, sit aside any personal vendettas or ill feelings that you might have, and listen to the voice of the people. Do the right thing and return the Blue Water Festival to the people of Port Huron. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. On a lighter note, I wasn't expecting all this. I just came in, I was at the St. Clair offshore races, I had a fantastic time. I know what it takes, I'm a promoter of the snowmobile race, to put things together like this, and it's a great effort, and all you guys involved, with Canada, their government, LeAnn leading up things, you guys go over and above. And the festival, we were down there, we enjoyed some pretty big-name bands, and we were surprised it was only a dollar. And I understand, there is tough times for a lot of people. Whether it has to be mandatory or not, there's never enough money, and you guys know that, you guys deal with it so well. And there's never enough money for a snowmobile race. It's always, it's always an uphill battle, all the way to the very end, and there's nothing left for who's out there doing it, you know, who's actually doing the legwork to make these festivals happen. And I was here, I came here to applaud you guys, and I thanked you for all your efforts.
Thank you. Could you give us your name for the record?
Yeah, Timothy Eensworth.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Carol Cataldo. I live at 606 Garfield Street in the wonderful city of Port Huron. What I want to say is, let's put Port Huron back into the Blue Water Festival. One thing right here, and I say this on this shirt, make sure you see this cameraman, it says, "Port Huron to Mackinac." We have every right to have these shirts. Thank you. I went to Sam's Club for $11.98, by the way, to get this shirt, saying so our local vendors are not allowed to sell these shirts. Now, oh yes, because Bayview Yacht Club owns the right to say, "Port Huron to Mackinac," and that kind of upsets me, because this is my town, this is where the race happens. Now, let's get back to the Blue Water Fest. I am upset that we even have to use an outside promoter and lose our tax dollars for this event. Why do we pay $65,000 to LeAnn Perks? Isn't that supposed to be, her job is to promote the city of Port Huron? Have a good job! Hey, you know, and the thing is, I was last Thursday night to The Rockin' the Rivers with the City Park and Rex. It was fun! Jeez, oh Pete, they do a good job. Can't they help us put on our Blue Water Festival? They seem to be getting an idea of what it takes, and every year, there's more people, oh my gosh, and they had Three Olive Vodka as one of their sponsors this year. It wasn't just beer, you could actually get a mixed drink. I was, I was kind of impressed. But anyhow, back to, you know, the thing is, it really, it frustrates me. We hire an out-of-town promoter, he brings in out-of-town suppliers, out-of-town vendors, they take this money and they take it back out of the city of Port Huron. We need, we need to support our businesses, we need to keep the dollars that I am supposed to be spending at this event, and keep them locally, so that we're supporting everybody in this room. For crying out loud, let's not have a go-to Detroit, or back to Royal Oak, or wherever Jonathan Witz comes from. We are not idiots. And the thing is, the people from the Blue Water Festival Committee, the old committee, are willing to mentor us, to teach us how to do a festival. And I think that's wonderful that they're, they're going to do this. And one thing I want to comment also, we did the Light of Boat Parade, and I obviously, this is my second year participating in the Light of Boat Parade, and I obviously am the one that stands out, because I'm the only sailboat in the parade. And so it's very easy to find out which boat is mine. But anyhow, this year, with the wonderful, and I say this very sarcastically, efficiencies of the Jonathan Witz staff, you know when that parade was. I'm still waiting for my prize, because I obviously won in the sailboat division. I put forth my time and effort and energies to decorate my boat and go parade up and down the river and have a good time while I'm parading, actually, after I was done parading. I got nothing. I got my gas card, but what was promised by the Witz Committee still hasn't been in forthcoming. So I contacted Mike Batshuler from the Port Huron Power Squadron, he also is a yacht club member, like myself, and I said, "Mike, what have you heard?" You know, because he's the chairman, and I'm going to go through the proper channels, and he says, "I have heard nothing. Nothing. Let me send some more emails." And that was just this afternoon, I talked to Mike-
Your time is up, your four minutes is up.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ruth Kraft, and I'm here representing my son. He's a wheelchair user, he's up there to the left, and what I have is against the Blue Water Festival, too, I'm afraid. I was down there in 2010, I was really upset. We enjoy the concerts, and thank you for having those, but as barriers in a wheelchair, unless, maybe if you're not in a wheelchair, or if you're not helping somebody in a wheelchair, you wouldn't understand. But when I took a picture last year, in 2010, of all these porta-potties, and not one is And I went home and I called here, I found out who I could talk to, so I called to LeAnn Perk, showed her the problem, told her the problem. I wanted to be able to take my son down to enjoy the concerts, because we do have a lot of barriers in life. I'm sure wheelchair users may not realize that. So this year, when we went down to the concert on Family Night, this is the porta-potties, they did cut down from 36 of them to 22 zero handicap again. So when we were at the concert, I did see her and ask her, "Where am I going to take my son to the bathroom?" So you can see how frustrated I might have been, and how my son might have been. It's very hard, if you can't do much in life, but you can go to the bathroom, but you don't have a place to go. I'm sorry. I just thought, I took care of it in 2010, nothing was 2011. Also, when we were there, Family Night, they had barriers across the sidewalk, coming up the ramp from the river. We had to go back down, we could not get him off the curb, another wheelchair behind us could not get off the curb. You know, this is Family Night, come on, help us out a little. It's hard to take care of someone with a wheelchair. It's hard for my son to be able to see me get so frustrated with this. But here's 2011, and again. I don't, I'm sorry, I don't know if it costs more for a handicap portable bathroom, but could we have one? Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Good evening. My name's Jason Quinn. I was also the paceboat driver this weekend, paceboat number one for the offshore races. That boat was generously donated by the gentleman behind me, Mike Scott. He was unable to make it, so he let me drive it. I've been a boater in this area since I could get a life jacket on, through my family. I really want to say thank you for bringing this back to the area. I think this is a big deal for Port Huron. The racers and the race meetings had some issues in St. Clair, we cleared them up here, we took care of them for them. The racers were extremely happy. Everyone I've talked to that saw the races liked the races. I also administer a website called LakeStClairRun.com. We've got a lot of posts on there, and a lot of good feedback for it, and it's a lot of offshore boat people that are really into this kind of stuff and really like it. And to have both these races back-to-back weekends is really good, and I think it'll draw a lot more people here for a longer term. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Michael Scott, I'm a resident of Marysville. I moved away from the area about 20 years ago. I was kind of excited to move back, I was in a different part of the country. When I did get back, I was kind of shocked to see what happened to the area in such a relatively short span of time. I was looking forward to the Blue Water Festival, and actually, I had a good time. I think it was pretty good. The bands, you know, were nice, I never had bands like that when I was a teenager, but, you know, we weren't really interested in bands when we were kids. Yeah, I didn't have a problem paying a dollar, you know, to get in. I mean, if you don't have a dollar, then you got other problems. But, you know, I also kind of agree that it's not, it shouldn't be outsourced to take care of a city, or to promote a city, but when you look at what's happened to Port Huron, obviously, something's gone wrong. If you gotta hire someone from the outside to come in and try and turn things around, then I'm all for it. You know, everyone's got their gripes and complaints, you know, things don't happen overnight. Everything's based off a trial and error. For the first year, I think everything went out pretty good, in my opinion. Things like Blue Water Fest, the offshore boat race, I think things like that is what this area needs, to put Port Huron back where it used to be. I mean, if you go downtown, look at downtown, you know, to me, I think it's pretty pathetic what's happened to downtown Port Huron. Most of the places you're around to, you got nothing but bars. I mean, really, how many bars you need in a downtown area the size of Port Huron? I mean, really. You know, and then look at the bars. Out of all those bars, there's only what, maybe two of them that you can actually go to and actually feel somewhat safe in, you know? So, in my opinion, if you gotta outsource it to turn this place around, then fine, you know, I'll support whatever you guys want to do. Like I said, I didn't have any problem with anything. And I think events like this is what this city needs to get back to where it used to be 20 years ago, and something that we can all be proud of, because I guess if you want to spread the blame around, it can go to everyone in the room, everyone in the city, you know, everyone can take a little bit of share and responsibility for this place. So, that's all I got to say.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Angela Hoff, and I'm here on behalf of Blue Water Center for Independent Living and its Team Access, but more importantly, I'm here as a voice for people with disabilities living in Port Huron and its surrounding communities. According to the 2006 American Community Survey, which is conducted by the US Department of Census, there are approximately 26,763 people in St. Clair with one or more disabilities. People with disabilities are the largest minority population. Disability does not discriminate. You can be of any race, any age, any religion, or any income, and you can be hit by a disability. Our numbers continue to grow. According to the National Council on Disabilities, Americans with disabilities have $280 billion in disposable income, and $1 trillion in aggregate income. Please remember that when I get to the end. We are no longer invisible. In 1990, the ADA was enacted for people with disabilities, it was the equivalent of the Bill of Rights. This act provided for physical access, as well as access to programs, services. It's 21 years later, and sadly enough, we need to have a serious conversation about the ADA. Government buildings still are inaccessible, many businesses are not accessible, educational, recreational, and social opportunities have barriers. The city of Port Huron, I commend you because you're one of the few communities who took the steps in 1993 and evaluated your property. Sadly though, it stopped there. There was no corrective action plan put in place and adopted. Fast forward to today, this city has now put together a study of what needs to be fixed, however, it truly doesn't go far enough. Some of the questions we have are, is the plan only intended as a response to complaints, or is it an actual evaluation? Is the ADA compliance officer personally going to supervise compliance, or is the duty being delegated? Who or what will determine if the individual's responsible for compliance have the training or knowledge needed to administer ADA? Will there be the development of a checklist for protocols for event planners, programs, services, as well as physical access? Is the council confident that the compliance officer and who he delegates will have the knowledge to do the job? Recently, your Blue Water Festival took place. Accessible porta-potties did exist four or five blocks away. Fences were erected, so you couldn't take a wheelchair in. They could not access a sidewalk with a curb cut, that you spent all your dollars erecting, and then they're not usable by the residents. Port Huron has the opportunity to be a role model for communities in the thumb, not only in St. Clair County, but in the surrounding counties. And what do you have to gain from this? Remember the numbers I gave you early on? Do the math. $280 billion.
Your time is up.
Okay, thank you. I urge the council to consider establishing a committee of residents to ensure that accessibility and ADA are complied with, so that Port Huron is the place to discover the blue.
Thank you.
My name is Bea Castillo, and I'm a resident of Port Huron. I'm also here with Angela Hoff, and I represent other people with disabilities in Port Huron. Specifically, I'm here to speak about, just briefly, about Team Access, which is a cooperative organization between the Blue Water Center for Independent Living, the Arch of St. Clair County, Goodwill Industries, Michigan Rehab, that comprises, or is comprised of, a number of members who represent a wide variety of disabilities, visual impairments, hearing impairments, mobility, cognitive impairments. And we are available to give a personal assessment to experiences, not only public experiences like access through sidewalks in your front doors, or the ramps in this room, but also to help determine whether programs are accessible and usable. That's the second word in the Americans with Disabilities Act. Not only does a person have to be able to get to the venue, or to the place where the service is being offered, but they have to actually be able to use that service. And that's probably where cognitive impairments are affected among the greatest, but also people with visual and hearing- people with visual and hearing impairments as well. Team Access can help assess whether your programs are invitational, whether they genuinely appeal to and invite people with disabilities to come. In the early 1990s, I was very, very active in the development of accessible playgrounds in Port Huron. And we happily can say that seven of our nine playgrounds are ramped. But playgrounds, like other facilities, need maintenance, they need ongoing care, and they need renovation as well. The other thing is that print material needs to be presumed to be used by other people. For example, information about events, those kinds of things, not just small print where you have to ask for an alternative. Our information kiosks, for example, could be offered in alternative formats. Once again, I want to reiterate what Angela has said here a moment ago about the number of people that are affected by disabilities of one kind or another. There's a kind of an acronym that's used, a TAB, tab, we're all temporarily able-bodied if indeed we don't currently have a disability. Somewhere along the line, we're going to be affected by a disability of some kind and those that we love will be. We don't want them to be excluded from the activities and the benefits that our area has to offer. We may even have a little bit of an advantage in Port Huron because we're still growing and we're still changing and we have things to fix. So we can fix them with this perspective in mind. If 20% of the population has a disability, why wouldn't we be the gateway to accessibility and invitation to participate in all the amenities that we can build here in the future? That could actually be a marketing tool in the same way that big places like Branson, Missouri do or Disney World. Those are places that you can go with ease and confidence. I would like to see the Blue Water area be just that open a gateway for people with disabilities of all kinds and know that they can confidently get a room, use an activity, get from place to place, not be excluded because of carelessness, but to be included because we've carefully decided to include people with disabilities. Our tagline here is "Every Person, Every Place, Every Time."
Thank you.
This is David Ellingwood speaking. I live in Port Huron at Peru Village. I'm a resident here and I am legally blind. There's my white cane. And I want to speak about that, where all those fences, they're a hassle. They're, I would consider them being illegal because they interfere with the ADA because that was causing areas of Port Huron to be landlocked to people with disabilities. And therefore, they should make other arrangements if they got to have little cubby holes for alcohol or whatever, and then have their admission if they want to. But they were blocking major thoroughfares that I needed access. And I had to detour around all that crap and everything. And it was a real hassle. And speaking about that, while I'm on the subject of ADA, there are lights, traffic signals out there that are available. I haven't found any in this city, but I do want to thank you for having the tactile markings available at the curbs. I think they're a blessing. It's a start in the right direction. And I want to thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Nancy Gladwish and I've been a resident forever in Port Huron. I just want to say how wonderful last weekend with the boat races were. It was very well organized for the first annual and I hope that it continues to grow and the city supports it. It was just, I think it was a great success for both countries. And as far as the Blue Water Fest, I thought it was great. This lady said 100,000 people, you're not going to get 100,000 people again at Blue Water Fest. You're in competition with Bay Fest. And we all grew up on Black River when it was one big party and all the power boats. Now you go on Friday night, you know, there's very few boats going up and down the river. It's just not going to be like the good old days. And it shouldn't be. There was a lot more arrests 20 years ago, there was a death, you know? You didn't have the bands 20 years ago because everyone was partying on the water. Now the city has cleaned it up. It's a sailboat weekend. It's, I thought the Blue Water Fest was great. We had people from out of town. The light show was terrific, the band was terrific. I thought the attendance was great, much better than last year because of the weather. But you're not going to get much better when you're in competition with Bay Fest with big stars like Trey Atkins and Lady Annabella. You're just, this is what we're going to do and I thought it was great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Monica Mercurio. Anyone having a déjà vu moment? I can still buy a bottle of Aquafina for under 15 cents. However, this particular bottle I bought at the festival. There was a whole line of people waiting there to buy one just like it. It cost a dollar at the Lexington Art Festival. Last year, Mr. Brown told us the city of Port Huron, in his written, prepared response to the questions that were asked, paid 85 cents for this bottle of water or one just like it. Additionally, he told us the city paid 10 additional cents for a bottle deposit charge. At that time, I was wondering whose pocket that dime went into because all of us out here know, there's no deposit charge on a bottle of water. So I'm asking, since a bottle of water went from $2.50 last year to $3.00 this year, are we lining someone's pockets with the city's money or are we going to keep a really good watch on that 10 cents and assure your citizens they didn't pay a bogus charge this year? We listened to a problem with wheelchair entry. That wasn't one of the only issue we had at those entry points. And I understand that we can't control them all. But there were boater passes that were supposed to give you free access. Some of the responses that happened with that pass was a wave by, the next one was threats of police, and it went all the way so far as an obscene tirade about the boater's finances. We found that our dock attendants with their River Street Marina shirts were denied access to be able to go and do the job that they're paid to do. And because they're doing their job so well, this city is making money off of those marinas. They came across the same problems. Threats of police, demands for a dollar, and then obscenities thrown at them when they kept going to do their jobs. Toddlers, one of our most at-risk for heat-related illnesses, had their sippy cups removed. I saw six at one entry point, I saw four at another, I made sure other people saw it. This was on Thursday. And on Thursday at 11:30 in the morning, when I passed E&amp;A Credit Union, their thermometer read 100 degrees. I am so proud of this town that you took a sippy cup away from a toddler who couldn't hydrate then when the temperature reached over 100 degrees. Each of these things shows a problem with management, shows a lack of leadership. In fact, it shows a lack of common sense and absolutely no knowledge of the venue. It's past time to say we've made a mistake. And if you insist on hiring somebody to manage this event, we have Desmond, Etchison Ventures. They have a proven record. They know how to manage a money pit and turn it into a money maker. They know the venue, they have knowledge of the venue, and best of all, they're local. Thank you.
Johnny Dogg, resident of the city of Port Huron. Businessman. I look at Mackinac City, Mackinac Island, Mackinac Bridge, number one tourist spot in the state of Michigan. And then I look at the track record of Port Huron. And it really makes me wonder, why is not Port Huron number two or number one on the list with the international waters? There's a lot of history in this town. A great culture, great people, but council, mayor, city manager, not so great. Again, we have 25% unemployment in the city of Port Huron, the highest rate in the state of Michigan. But yet again, the city of Port Huron, with this Blue Water Fest, hired extra security outside the city. Why not give the people some jobs in this town and train them for that event? Give some people some hope, families with children. There's no reason why Port Huron couldn't be number two or number one on the list for tourism for the state of Michigan. You have this beautiful view. And I'm outraged at the council, the mayor, and the city manager for even turning their head on the community, the people of Port Huron. I read the paper, the talkback about the festival after the festival. I thought it was hearsay. And I read about diaper bag being checked, sippy cups being dumped out. What I heard from my customer, as you can say in a horse's mouth, I was more outraged about that sippy cup being poured out because it agreed a somebody trying to make a dollar that the vandalism on my truck seemed very trivial. And by the way, I've never had any vandalism done on my truck here until I started the run for mayor. Now I've had five incidents, the first one. Someone spray painted the pictures on my truck, which I value very much. That's like a family album. People that love and respect me in the community and surrounding communities and tourists. The second time, someone took a knife to my pictures. The third time, someone busted my mirror on my driver's side. The fourth time, somebody tried to throw a rock through my side window. And the last time, someone threw a bucket of paint on my windshield. But each time, I had to wait one hour for the police to come, four blocks. Seven o'clock in the morning, I'm sure there's a lot of crime going on at seven o'clock in the morning. I'm asked, in fact, I'm offering a $500 reward for the conviction of whoever's doing this. Council, mayor, city manager, these are the taxpayers. They pay your way. What we need to do is work together as a team, as a community.
Your time is up, four minutes.
My time is up? That's because I was born 5'10". I flew my flag high, now ask me why. We'll do that on the next one. Paid for by Johnny Dogg.